In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice of January 5, 2017. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Township Clark, advertised in the Nutley Sun and Star Ledger on January 12, 2017, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Blackwood?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Susan Roehm?
Mr. Valzama?
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Here.
Mr. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Kozinski?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Scholera?
Here.
Ms. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Cornisella?
Here.
We need motion for approval of minutes.
Bring the motion.
Second.
Ballot.
Time.
Any correspondence tonight?
Yes, Mr. President. We received a letter from the State of New Jersey addressed to the Board. The subject was the Nutley Public School District Carl D. Perkins Grant Audit. The Department of Education Office of Fiscal Accountability and Compliance has completed a fiscal audit of the Carl D. Perkins Grant of the Nutley Public School District. The review covered the period of July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016. There are no audit findings to report, and the audit unit would like to thank the Nutley Public School District for their cooperation during completion of this fiscal audit. Sincerely, Robert J. Chiquino, Director of the Office of Fiscal Accountability and Compliance.
Chiquino.
So again, I would like to extend our appreciation to our staff, Mr. Levine and Mr. Memora, who worked along with me on that day, and we're very proud to be able to make this report. Also, this evening, most of you have recognized that we now have a new sound system, which we budgeted for this year, so hopefully the audio will be better to the public. There is a button on the base for on and off, you'll see indicated in red, as well as around the neck of the microphone to let you know when your microphone is on and off, so it's a lot clearer for Board members to know when it's going on.
Thank you, Mrs. Jennings. Tonight, before we go to the Superintendent Report and Board Secretary Report, we're going to have our student representative, your per report.
Thank you. I have midterms tonight, so I gotta go home. So just the regular update, Student Council, senior citizens, they're doing, I mean Student Council's doing a prom for the senior citizens on Valentine's Day, where they're gonna go and dance, it'll be really cute. Senior class had their fashion show, it was really, really successful, I think we had a full house. Everyone looked great, so that was cool. Now we're in midterms, and we had Miss Sherman and a few others, including Kevin Knight, come to talk about Really for Life, so that got us really, really excited. I mean, in Nutley High School, all the students felt to get involved, the clubs make teams, everyone's really excited, so that's gonna be held on May 19 at the mural from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Okay, so there's something off limits that I kinda wanna talk about, and a concern of mine is about the computer science program. So I teach a computer science program, Wednesdays after school, every Wednesday or every other Wednesday, and there's a lot of interest from the students. And before I wanted, before I leave, I know I'm a senior, I'm leaving, but I just kinda wanted to express the importance of computer science program or class that maybe can be administered next year or the upcoming years. So I wanna go through a few things, the importance of it, I mean, it's the future. You know, computer science is really prominent in many, many workforces, in almost colleges, universities, some of them almost require their students to take it no matter what the major is. No, it's the exposure to computer science that's becoming more and more prevalent today. Nutley is actually, I feel, is a little behind compared to Milburn, they had a computer science class for 25 years, and Nutley hasn't had one. So, you know, students in Nutley, I feel, even lack the exposure and the importance of computer science. I know when I had my first class, I had over 40 students come, we had 16 computers, so it was almost like three students per computer, everyone was really excited. I just had a friend come last Wednesday to teach a class, he's a graduate from Nutley High School, he goes to Harvard, so I mean, the students are really excited about that too. But I think, I just wanna leave with, there is an interest for computer science, there is an importance for computer science, and I think we really, really need to implement this in our school system. It'll be great for the students, it's a great exposure to prepare them for college, maybe can be considered a practical art, so we have a requirement there too, and I just really want everyone here to consider it as an opportunity for our students, so thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, please.
Okay, well, we're getting off track, it's, okay, anything, everybody, thank you to everybody who was able to come out tonight and brave the weather. We were scheduled, actually, we were scheduled to recognize some of our choir and band students this evening, but we postponed that honor until next month, so we'll see them then. Good luck on your midterms, thank you.
Good night.
Good night. I also wanna thank you all who've come to one or more of our town hall meetings to discuss the proposed construction. Your input and feedback have been valuable, and we are considering all of it, I hope that you know that, we do consider it all. You've asked wonderful questions as well, and Karen Greco continues to update the frequently asked questions and answers, and all of these are posted on our district website. You can also email your questions, comments, or concerns to us at ideasandfeedback@nutleyschools.org. I would tell you to please also continue to suggest community and neighborhood groups who'd like to host us to speak about the projects. The next regularly scheduled town hall meetings are February 1 at Spring Garden School and February 8 at Radcliffe School, and hopefully you'll be able to come and join us again. Believe it or not, I know this will come as a shock, the proposed construction projects aren't the only thing we have going on in the district. Tomorrow night is our first parent academy to discuss the rotating block schedule, that meeting's gonna be held at the high school at 7 o'clock PM, and we will be repeating the program on Tuesday, January 31, also at 7 o'clock PM. On Wednesday night, the high school is going to host our 8th grade information night for parents as their students get ready to transition up to the high school, and that program will begin at 6:30 PM. But wait, there's more! Ginsu night! As part of our English Language Arts Program Review, Coordinator Brooke Benavides has been bringing staff to demonstration reading and writing workshops in the area to help staff compare and validate their practice. The feedback has been terrific, and I have to say, I'm looking forward to other opportunities for our staff to be able to collaborate with each other and to collaborate with their colleagues in other districts. We had our second new teacher orientation follow-up meeting today, thank you to Mr. Materia and to Robert Powell for their efforts, and we're preparing for our meeting with our mentors on Monday. We also had our first Superintendent's Advisory Council meeting, which is a teacher leadership cohort of staff in the district who are exploring how they might be able to engage with our programs and initiatives to empower systemic change, not just for themselves, but for their colleagues. So we are busy throughout the district, and it is quite an exciting time for all of us. On a more serious note, over the last two days, we've experienced several safety and security issues. I am grateful to all of you who have chosen not to be a bystander and to report it if they see it or experience something. This afternoon, we also received a blast from Commissioner Petracco and Chief Stromlo, and I would ask that you please speak to your children and remind them to be aware of their surroundings and careful whenever a stranger is approaching.
Thank you, Dr. Blazer. Mrs. Jennings?
Thank you. Tomorrow, emails will begin to go out to all administrators as well as Board members from the State of New Jersey Ethics Department regarding the annual financial disclosures, so please be on the lookout for those emails and file reports as soon as possible. If you do not receive an email by, I would say, within a week, please call my office and let Josephine know so she can contact them to have it re-sent to you. And also, check your spam, because many times that's where the email ends up. Just a reminder that during the February break, we will be completing the replacement of the lock stool of high school classrooms, refinishing the floor at Spring Garden. Heating system in the Spring Garden gym has been fully repaired and is operational. And we continue to go through our budget meetings with 2017-18 budget, and we're going to be having additional meetings with administrators over the next week or so.
Thank you, Mrs. Jennings. At this point, we're going to the committee reports, and we have academic, Mr. Valzama.
The academic committee met on January 12, in attendance were myself, Mrs. Dancheck-Martin, Ms. Sherman, Dr. Blazer, Mr. Bania, and Ms. Will Consolo. We discussed the English Language Arts Program Review, the English Language Arts Program Review is complete, and we're looking forward to a presentation committee in February from Coordinator Brooke Benavides and External Consultant Dr. Spalvin Ray. Thank you to all of those from the staff and community who participated in the survey process. Mr. Bania and Ms. Will Consolo reviewed the January 13 single session today for staff development offerings K-12, as well as curriculum suggestions for presidential inauguration that were shared with staff. We also heard Mr. Bania about the need for collaboration between staff and custodians in the High School Science Department to maintain a clean, safe, and healthy work environment, and the planned professional learning on January 13 for staff and custodians. This PD was led by Lieutenant Von Roth and the Hazmat team from the Nutley Fire Department and the Essex County Health Service Department. Phil Nicolet and his team, Dennis Williams, the EAN, and Dr. Blazer were also in attendance. The 2017-2018 district calendar that is being recommended on tonight's agenda for approval was also reviewed. It was suggested that we also develop a 2018-2019 calendar for approval on a subsequent agenda so staff and community can plan for it in advance. Additionally, the committee reviewed personnel and legal updates, as well as proposed district field trips and requested professional learning and travel reimbursement expenditures, these are all included for approval on this agenda. The next meeting of the academic committee will take place on Wednesday, February 8, 2017, at 5:30 with a town hall meeting at Radcliffe School to follow at 8:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Valzama. Mr. Kozinski, could you take administration?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The administration committee met on January 12. Myself, Mr. Cornisella, Mr. Scholera, and Dr. Blazer were in attendance. We reviewed the curriculum and the presidential moderation, we discussed what it's gonna be doing with the staff and the students for that particular day, we also discussed the district calendar, which was already talked about, we had a brief discussion about Every Student Succeeds Act, and then we talked about Board of Education members meeting with DeCara Robino on a regular basis to discuss our progress and try to deal with any remediation problems that we can deal with ahead of time, and we talked about some legal issues. Our next meeting is scheduled through February 6 at 4:30.
Thank you, Mr. Kozinski. Mr. Ferraro?
Yes, Mr. President. Finance committee met on January 17. Mr. Nicolet, Mr. Brown reached the committee on the work orders that were completed this past month. Mr. Nicolet also provided updates on the classroom lock installation at the high school, the middle school chiller replacement project that has been completed, the repair to the heating unit and skid monitoring mechanism, and the remediation of the noise emanating from the chimney of our school. The committee also discussed proposed future projects, including the repair of the main steps at Lincoln School and the middle schools. And Mr. Nicolet provided the committee with a sample of the new lock that's gonna be distributed to all head of districts who are tracking required building maintenance. Tonight's financial agenda resolutions were reviewed with the committee. Ms. Sherman provided a role review of the 2017-18 budget development and shared the budget submission calendar with the committee. Committee also met with representatives from the district's insurance broker and reviewed the district's medical and medical programs, claims, trends, and the renewal projections for the next year. The committee discussed the proposed bus lot, PSC and GCM, extended day financials, rates for substitute technology staff, and the academic and staff calendars for 2017 and 18. And our next meeting is scheduled for February 13.
Thank you, Mr. Ferraro. Just a brief note with regards to the calendar, what we're going to be doing moving forward is designing calendars so that the year's when we have an early Labor Day, early Labor Day, we have the full week, and then the times when Labor Day falls, or we have a late Labor Day, we would then have a short week for the February break, so you'll be able to see some of that coming out in the calendars that are coming out for approval. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation Number 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications, each person shall be limited to 30 minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. You may speak more than once, only after others wish you to speak on a topic that could hurt. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign in with Mrs. Kakuza before you take your mic. Will the first person please step forward on resolutions?
Good evening, everyone, I'm not gonna take a lot of your time. Carrie Ferrara, science teacher in Nutley High School. And I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge my resignation from my position and to thank all of you, so Dr. Blazer, Board President Cornisella, Board of Education members, administrators, teachers, staff, and students. I would like to take a moment to reflect on the past nine years I was fortunate enough to be a teacher at Nutley High School and a member of the Nutley Public School family. As a resident of Nutley and a graduate of Nutley High School, my role as a science teacher at NHS continued to give me a sense of pride. Each and every morning I felt, when I entered Nutley High School, that I was going home. Dr. Blazer, thank you for giving me the opportunity to branch out of Nutley High School and see the other six schools in Nutley and work with the teachers, staff, and students to infuse technology throughout the district. From the moment I barged into your office on your first official day in Nutley, you believed in me, and for that I am so grateful. After every building visit, no matter what classroom or age group, I left in awe of what the teachers and staff do on a daily basis and how lucky our students are to be in their classrooms. Mr. Bania, I'm so happy you're here. For the past nine years, I have been lucky enough to call you not only my department coordinator and boss, but a friend and supporter. You have pushed me to continue striving to be the best professional I can be and to never stop learning. Thank you for giving me more opportunities to grow than I can mention and for making me love coming to work each and every day. Mr. Levine, who's not here, I was fortunate enough to meet to complete an internship for my master's degree, and at the same time, he was in desperate need of one. From the moment he came to Nutley Public Schools, he taught me many invaluable information and lessons that I will take with me as I begin my new career. Real-time, Google Suite, Performance Matters, Perkins Grants, Technology Infusion, all of this I learned from him, and he challenged me to become an expert in as many fields as I could. Thank you to him for supporting and believing in me. All of the administrators in the district, building principals, department coordinators, supervisors, thank you for welcoming me into your buildings, for helping me to push the technology initiatives of Nutley Public Schools, and for inspiring me to become an administrator like all of you one day. And I would be remiss without noting my favorite person in the district, my father, the security officer, who, every day when I got to see him down the hallways, I said hello daddy, and Dr. Blazer heard me many times, and it was the highlight of my day when I was able to see him, when he came to visit me, and I have to thank him for keeping our buildings and our students safe. The Nutley Public School teachers and staff, you are my extended family, and each and every one of you have influenced me to become a better teacher in person. The lessons I have learned from all of you I will take with me, and the conversations I have had with so many of you leave me with a sense of happiness as I continue my professional journey. Never stop learning and growing and using technology in your classrooms, please. To all the support staff, secretaries, custodians, and anyone I've missed, thank you for making Nutley Public Schools function on a daily basis, for making my classroom a safe and clean environment for my students, and for all of the hard work you do when no one else is around to make our buildings beautiful. And last, to my Nutley High School students, I thank all of you from the bottom of my heart for making these past nine years the best years of my life. Your impact and influence on me has driven me to be the best I can for all of you. You taught me to be more, I'm sorry, you taught me more than you will ever understand, and you gave me the greatest possible gift, the gift of loving my job. Be the best that you can possibly be, every day, no matter what, and remember, I am just an email owner. So making this decision to leave Nutley Public Schools has been the hardest decision of my life thus far, but every educator has the responsibility, not only to themselves, but to their students, to continue learning, growing, and developing as a professional, and now it is my time to do that. I will miss all of you dearly and hope that these amazing relationships will continue in my classes. Thank you. All of you.
Can we thank you too, Carrie, we're gonna miss you, but we're not saying goodbye, we'll say see you soon. You have been a wonderful asset, we really will just have you here every day.
Ms. Ferrara, I just wanted to say, I know that we haven't had very many lengthy conversations, but one thing that I can say is, every time that I've seen you and have any conversation with you, you've always had that gleaming smile. Even under the worst of circumstances, you were always positive, and one thing that I can say is, this district is definitely going to miss that, because we definitely need that positive attitude in every step that we take. Good luck in whatever your next venture is, and truly best of luck. Thank you.
If I could.
Absolutely.
I'm a little different than...
One of those words, by the way.
I was fortunate enough to work with your mother and father, I was fortunate enough to see you raised to be the person that you are. It's, you are nothing, you're nothing. The children are gonna miss you, I'm sorry that my grandchildren will not be able to reap your benefits, but I'm sure Mr. Bania will do a good job helping us out here, but I'm surely gonna miss you, and I appreciate everything you've done for our children in Nutley.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, Carrie, I have to state that, you know, I go back a long time to failing me at your house when you were a little kid running around, you know, great family, done great here. We're gonna miss you, I know you had to move on, and I know you're going to Disney World, so I'm only here because we're all Disney addicts, so I had to jump in.
I'm not moving to Florida.
But, good luck.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Terry Corr, 45 Hampton Place, spokesperson for the Nutley Parent advocacy network. First of all, happy new year, everybody, and thank you, Mrs. Ferrara, really. I just, I'm really excited about this page, this is page, I don't have my glasses on, nine, about the community-based instruction sites. What is this exactly? Is this for its transition to adult life? How's this going to work? I'm just curious.
So it's part of our existing transition program where you give, our, thank you, I'm never gonna remember. Part of our existing transition program where our students have the opportunity to be in their own community in actual practical, authentic environments, learning practical skill.
Okay, so you got an okay from the post office and all these other places?
So this is a typical thing that we do, is part of the program. What we need to do is have it approved on the board agenda so that as students leave their buildings, they have their liability covered, and our teachers are also, it's like a, think of field trip requests.
Field trip, okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Valzama, could you take academic resolutions?
Yes, Mr. President, academic resolutions, 124, listed.
Roehm?
Mr. Valzama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes, to 1 through 3, and no on 4.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes, on 1 and 2, no on 3 and 4.
Mrs. Scholera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes. Mrs. Kozinski, could you take administration?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I approve administration resolutions 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Kakuza, Roehm?
Mr. Valzama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scholera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes. Mr. Ferraro, could you take finance resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I approve the motion to approve Finance Resolutions 1 through 14 and 15.
Roehm, Mrs. Kakuza?
Mr. Valzama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scholera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes. Mrs. Dancheck-Martin, could you take personnel, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to, Personnel Resolution 21, provided as written.
That works. Roehm, Mrs. Kakuza?
Mr. Valzama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes, on 1 through 4, no on 5.
Mrs. Scholera?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Cornisella?
In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulation allows 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to 3 minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me in its entirety. I'm sorry. And no one else. Sorry.
You may come to check.
Just talk to me a minute.
We're gonna get married.
Just put your ear up.
Terry Corr, 45 Hampton Place, spokesperson for the Nutley Parent advocacy network. I can see that you just passed the bullying and intimidation and harassment policy, and I know it was a first and second reading, I didn't get a chance to read them myself, but I do have some questions in regards to scenarios that have kind of come down the pipe in the past, and I just wanted to know how the board feels about these particular things. I've had a couple of parents contact me in regards to bullying situations that their children were victimized in. Usually, the aggressors never call me, it's usually the parents of the victims that call me. So with these parents, they usually are not able to know what has happened to the aggressor in terms of, has the aggressor been disciplined, or they really, and it kind of leaves it a little open-ended for them, because they won't see that the aggressor may be suspended or taken out of class. So is there anything that the parent of the victim can know, or other than, I know, I know you're smiling at me because you know that you can't tell me anything, but is, can they at least be reassured that they, this situation is under control? I think that's the bottom key with them.
So...
It's on.
It's on. So, one of the things, so what we're voting on, just to clarify, is not policy at every meeting when you see these, these are actual incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So when you see them on the board agenda, that means there's been a full investigation and there's been a determination, one way or another, there's been a consequence, one way or the other. The board has been asked to review those investigations and vote with whatever that outcome is, whether consequence or otherwise. I would say that that process should be reassuring to a family on both sides, because that means there's been a full investigation, meaning speaking to all the students involved, whoever else might have been involved, having a determination met by more than one set of eyes. We do have harassment, intimidation, and bullying officer in each school, and again, these investigations are pages and pages long. I mean, when the board members get them, every week if we have new ones, we send them, it really has become a thing where you take a lot of time, you really consider every aspect of it, and while, the same is when we talk about personnel issues, we cannot share that, or special ed issues, we can't share that, I hope that you have the confidence that it's being handled in a building level by administration and our HIV, harassment, intimidation, and bullying counselors, and that it's being really well considered and reviewed by all of us.
Okay. What happens in a... Okay. Uh, what happens in, in another scenario where something has been documented and a victim actually at one point stands up to their aggressor? So now, both of them are aggressors, and so are they disciplined the same way? I mean, in, in one sense, you know, I'll have a parent call me up and say, listen, you know, I'm gonna tell my, my son that the next time that kid, and I, you know, I try to say, oh, won't you, but I can understand the frustration. So now, both of them will be disciplined the same way, is that?
Not necessarily. I mean, you, you, again, it's part of the investigation, and you have to consider all the aspects, um, what happens during that investigation. I would also say, just as part of this process, after there's a determination, um, you might not be aware, maybe the community isn't aware, the letter does go home to the parents detailing all of that information. It is voted publicly in a board meeting. Families also do have the opportunity to appeal or come before the board if there is a question, if they have a concern, if they disagree. So there are lots of avenues to have these kind of conversations. You shouldn't feel, um, frustrated by the process.
Okay. And just one more question. In regards to, this is really student to student. What happens if there's another situation where it's like student to staff member or staff member to student? It sort of, and I'm not saying faculty or administration, maybe there's a staff member on board that's not doing something that they should be doing. I'm just a little, how do we handle, how does a parent handle that?
That also gets reported and investigated.
Okay.
So if, if that is the case, that also should be reported, and a full investigation is also handled.
To the principal or to the?
To, to the principal or HIV counselor, to me. To, you can report to anyone. That's first an investigation, but again, the same way, you know, you won't know the outcome. You aren't necessarily gonna know the consequence.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions to the board? Any old business coming for the board? Any new business?
The only other to answer the students' report was that after we had the assembly at the high school, we had 25 teams sign up, all made up of students from both the high school and a few of the middle schools. And Nutley Relay for Life, which is gonna be held on May 9th at the mural park.
Can we make it a board team? I'm in.
Make it a board team?
Make it a board team.
Well, that's quick. We have a board team?
We have a board team. Thank you.
Karen's gonna schedule it, arrange it. Okay, whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion due to NJS 810, colon, 4-12, now therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Education recesses closing the session this time to discuss student matters, personnel and property acquisition. Be it further resolved that the result of the discussion will be made publicly by inclusion on the agenda of the subsequent meeting of the Board of Education or whether reasons for discussing such matters in the whole session no longer exist. Can we have a, uh, motion? Motion?
Second.
All in favor?